We're gonna miss a lot, huh?
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi Doc.
Call please.
Mayor furniture.
Here.
Alderman, Alderman Toddwell, Alderman House.
Here.
Alderman John Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Hook.
Here.
Alderman Daddy Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Rizika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a forum.
Thank you. I approve the agenda.
Move your first.
Second. All prepared.
Aye.
opposed. Thank you. Personal appearance is Dan Krieger in the US Fish and Wildlife. Here to talk about the Missouri private lands.
Thank you very much. Going to, uh... I'm gonna pass out some information. So let's you know a little bit more about who we are. First of all, this is a privilege and opportunity for the Fish and Wildlife Service to be involved in a partnership with the city of St. Genevieve. And we very much appreciate that opportunity. Who we are is, we are, um... Basically with US Fish and Wildlife Service and we, our program is the Partners for Fish and Wildlife Program. I'm a private land biologist and I work with willing landowners to restore and enhance wildlife habitat. I mean, that's basically what the program is. If we don't do it with Missouri citizens and landowners like yourself, we're not gonna make any impacts in the state of Missouri or anywhere across the nation because private landowners own the majority of the land. So... What we're, what we're trying to do is provide an opportunity here. We have funding available now. We have it set aside for the city of St. Genevieve because the leadership group with Sandra and the rest of the team came to us and asked us about it. It's a great project. We're, we're inspired and motivated about it and we'd love to participate with you on this. We, we do have, like I said, we do have the money set aside now and so we'd like to go ahead and commit it to you. The, um... We have a lot of partners that we, that we deal with. And I'll just give you an example because what we do as an agency is we leverage dollars with other agencies and other partners to provide the best deal possible for landowners. Some of the partners that we have are Ducks Unlimited, National Wild Turkey Federation, Quell Forever, the Soil and Water Conservation Districts across the state of Missouri, the Natural Resources Conservation Service, and the Farm Services Agency. That's just to name a few. So what are we doing in the city of St. Genevieve? What we're trying to do is restore 30 acres of bottomland forest and we're doing that primarily for migratory and resident birds. And it's gonna provide an opportunity to, um, to go out and view these birds. We're excited about the pecan trees because you guys have some awesome pecan trees in this community. So we're gonna bring those pecans down to the bottom, continue the, the history and the heritage there. They're gonna do well in that type of soil. So that's gonna be part of the planning and we're going to include some other hardwood species there so that we can produce mass for wildlife and, um... Which right now, there's not a lot of mast trees down there. So that's what we're gonna try to do. And then, um... We also... Talked to the leadership team about the specific goals that, that the city has for that property. So we're incorporating your goals and what we're doing. They match up well and that is basically providing, you know, a wide variety of habitat and, uh, also trying to think about migratory birds as a, as a primary goal there. And bird watching and bringing the community and the public out there to see it as well.
Are we in conjunction with the same thing or we're doing the same thing that we talked about as a board before? Is this...
Two weeks ago.
Well, yeah. We were trying to catch up on your, on where you're talking about and what you're talking about and you got right in there and we're still trying to figure out...
It's the planting area, okay, on the dry side, wet by the bird.
Yeah, but we talked about some other things two weeks ago.
Yeah.
And this is in conjunction with that.
This is the first phase of planting.
Okay, alright.
The trail and the lookouts, that's, that's gonna have to happen with somebody else.
Yeah, the, the part that we do, um, is the habitat part. So that's what I'm talking about is the 30 acres of tree plants. How, and how are we gonna do that? We're gonna provide funding for that and we're, we're gonna provide funding. The Fish and Wildlife Service Partners for Fish and Wildlife Program, the Missouri Department of Conservation is gonna be a partner in this funding. And I am going to also seek out a grant from the Missouri Bird Conservation Initiative to also supplement that funding. So we'll all work together in partnership in, in funding this, this project. So I already mentioned the benefits. Migratory birds, educational opportunities, um, you know, the trees are gonna filter the water and the sediments so cleaner water is gonna be a result of this. You'll have some environmental benefits. And when would we like to start? We'd like to start in November. That's a good time to plant these trees. So, um, you know, with your endorsement and permission, we'd, we'd love to work with you as a partner. And so, the rest is open for questions. Go for it. I think this is true.
How you handle, how you physically handle? Do you contract that planting out or...
What, what I, yeah, what I would offer is to at least, um, because you guys are the boss, but what I would offer is, you know, I know of contractors that do this sort of work, both the planning material, you know, vendor for the planning material and also the, the person to do the work. So I can suggest that to you. If you decide you wanna go a different route, have other ideas, that's up to you. But I, but I do have sources.
Do you, do you tell them a pecan tree goes there and a willow goes here and a maple goes here?
They, this particular vendor has planted thousands and thousands of these trees. So we can mix it up, uh, however, you know, however you decide, however you want it, um, but, um, you know, we'll, we'll do it, try to do a naturalized planting and, and mix them up and then, you know, after a while, the softwoods are gonna start coming in. And that's probably, once the hardwoods are established and we'll back off and let the forest evolve on its own. And, uh, but, um... But we don't have to do a lot of coaching to this particular person or this particular contractor and, uh, because they've done a lot of it.
Just randomly plant? There's no method to, it's just put it back like a natural?
Yeah, there really isn't because all the soil type, you know, most of that, all that soil is the same and elevation is about, you know, you do have some little swag. We have to be a little bit careful about not planting pecans in, in really low wet ground. You don't have a lot of that, but there's some of it. So we'll try to, you know, look at the higher elevations to plant most of the trees.
And if there's any questions from the Corps of Engineers, I don't know if the committee's been into that or not or, or if you, if that's something you work with that agency too, to make sure that what you're doing isn't in conflict with what they say we can do or what we can't do.
We're gonna follow exactly what the Corps requires on planting anything anywhere.
Hey Dan, when we plant these trees, what's the size of these trees that we're planting?
These trees are two, in two gallon containers and so they're gonna be about, roughly about this tall, about four feet.
Alright. And we plant those in the fall, right?
Yeah, November through, usually December fifteenth, right before the ground freezes out where you can't plant.
Okay, that's great.
Has there been anything nearby that you've done? I mean, in this area or where's, where's the nearest, I guess, uh, similar project?
You actually have some... Yeah, I don't know if I would compare it as similar, but there, right over the levee, there are some trees there that were planted of the same type. I believe they're swamp white oaks is what we saw and they, they look, they look great. They're, and they're on the riverside of the levee, so, um, this will be a little bit more protected so chances are these trees are gonna do better and, um... So, you know, as far as any large scale plantings, I'd have to look around. I have not been involved in large scale plantings like this close by.
Right.
But, um, but I could find out if we have.
You're curious.
Yeah, because the refuge, you know, they may have done some, uh, the Upper Mississippi or Middle Mississippi National Fish and Wildlife Refuge may have done some plantings and they would be more than happy to show you if you wanna go out and see some of what they've done.
Right.
Yeah.
There's a map of the, in their packet, there's a resolution with a map, uh, the map that you provided, this is in their packet tonight. So maybe we can talk about the 30 acres, because I don't know if you mentioned that.
Oh, okay. Yeah, if I didn't mention 30 acres, I, um, I'll mention it now, but that's what we're, that's what we're shooting for, about 30 acre block of tree plantings. And the question came up about adjusting that somewhat for the farming activities so that rows could be straighter and that's fine. You know, we're gonna be flexible on that. But what this does, from a habitat standpoint, it, it reduces habitat fragmentation. It connects these forests closer together and in conjunction with each other. It adds a unique habitat resource along the Mississippi River which we're in short supply of and that's forested corridors. And, uh, so you guys, I mean, this is a significant contribution to that.
Who's gonna be able to pick up the pecan?
Have at it. Everybody in this room.
The squirrels don't get 'em first.
That's right. And I'm sure you'll beat the squirrels if you want to.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much.
Good evening everyone and I apologize for my phone. I forgot to, uh, turn it off. I'm so used to, uh, having it on all the time and everything. The only reason I'm here is to, I wanted to personally invite all of you out to our open house on Sunday. Ribbon cutting is at one o'clock and since all of you were, played a vital role in this whole endeavor and everything, I felt like I wanted to come and give you a personal invitation to be sure and come and look at the building. If any of you, um, bought the local newspaper this week, I think you saw, uh, those were not made up, uh, ads. Those, that's the real thing that you saw and I think you'll find a very beautiful, um, place for our senior citizens of this community. So if anybody's got any questions, um...
It looks beautiful. Well, it looks great.
And, uh, I brought Ali along. That's Shafiq's brother. I don't know if you all remember him from when we had our meetings and, uh, everything, so, um, just something that I think all of you will be very, very proud of.
When are you starting moving patients in there?
Uh, it will, we have to, first of all, make sure that, you know, all the little nuances that the state looks at like fire, water, boiler, um, all those entities are up to code, taken care of and everything. And then the state comes in and does, goes through it, does a life safety, uh, check and everything and if everything's up to snuff, then we can start moving residents into that.
Great. Good deal.
So...
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you all again.
If I could add something, that Fire Department was recently invited to come out and tour the facility and we made a couple of recommendations and they jumped right on and helped us out there too. Really cul- culminating, place is really nice inside. We've already been out there and walked through it.
Thanks. Okay, Martin?
Okay, I mentioned to you our last meeting about the handrail that was required by the state. At the time that I wrote my report, we had estimated $5,500. As it turns out, the changeover will be $4,700. The contractor, uh, gave us a better price than we had anticipated. Read the paper, you know, I met with the Special World District following their meeting here, um, we had a good discussion. I understood when I left that they were going to have, in part of their budget process, come up with the amount of money that they could commit to a city project. And I need to know that before we can recommend what to do and, uh, so I'll be in touch with the board to, to get that information. The 2015 final documents finally got done, so the dollar amount, the $25,808.79 is what we will get from the federal government. You'll recall, we'd already received about $2,500 from the state. So that total, uh, for, for those damages was, uh, in the $28,000 range. I had a meeting with Joy Howard. She was the financial advisor when we, um, did, um... The, uh, whatever we did. The, um... Our, our certificates of participation are, um, $2,710,000. Have a call provision that, and they're callable in November. And what that means is we can redeem and refinance the bonds. Uh, and, and right now, based on the current market and her estimates, that would save, uh, about, over the 10 year remaining, $147,774. Now, it's not an equal amount every year, but it averages at about $14,000 a, a year savings, um, net after all expenses. Pay the bond counsel and pay the financial advisor and, uh... And it's basically a question of, should I pursue this? I, I'm, kind of a dumb question really. Should I pursue saving $14,000 a year?
Yeah.
But means we gotta go back to the credit markets. We gotta go through that whole process again. But with your consent, I will proceed and, uh, you will be receiving then, uh, the documents you have to execute in order for us to do that. We have been in communication with the insurance auto auctions in Pontoon Beach. We're auctioning off the dump trucks, yes.
Why are we going this route?
Auctioning?
Yeah.
It was, as opposed to...
As opposed to putting them in the papers saying we have these for sale at a certain price.
Yeah, our paper, we don't get much response from putting it in the paper. It's just nobody monitors the local press.
Alright.
We auction, I mean, this is, we've auctioned off surplus property in the past and we've gotten pretty good prices in these auto auctions, truck auctions.
Alright. That was my only question.
And David says that he was planning on doing it today or tomorrow, but since we're still gonna have good weather, he's gonna do it first of next week.
Okay.
And the auctions are every Thursday, so...
Might be cooler.
Pardon me?
Might be cooler.
Yeah, maybe. I'll let Kenny discuss the, uh, he's here to report on the fires, uh, the ice cards. We started the budget process. The notices have gone out to the staff, to, uh, directors to start preparing their preliminary budget. Always seems like we just did that, but it's time, it's time again. And I had the opportunity to tour every, every single one and, uh... It's, it, you really need to go out and take a look at it. It's very nice.
Get your room?
Got one reserved.
Any questions, anybody? Okay. Kenny, you're first.
Good evening everybody.
Good evening. Hey Kenny, how are you?
I'll have my monthly report in front of you.
I can just scan down through, the first thing is the facility I have there that I got two quotes for ice protection. Uh, we've been talking about that for over a year now, trying to get some kind of ice protection on there to keep our gutters from getting damaged and keep somebody from getting hit by falling ice. I tried and I gave Martin a copy of the summary to get several of the local contractors to give me bids. One of them gave me a bid, gave me the wrong bid and would never rebid it. Uh, we did get two other ones. One of them was for a steel rail, a single rail and the company that I would like to go with has actually Lexan. And they say it has a lifetime warranty with a little bit of maintenance every couple of years. Go up and check it and it was substantially less. Should have a, I think you have a copy of it in there. It was, uh, several thousand dollars less.
Do you think that would be the best one to do?
Yes, and the, the design of it, the steel, from what I was seeing, was going basically across the top of the rail and Lexan actually recesses down in between so it keeps things from sliding down. A lot better.
Good deal. Good deal.
So I did some research on them at Martin's request and I found out a whole lot more about them. They've been in business for 10 years and they have an A-plus rating with Better Business Bureau, no complaints. Called several people, including Dexter BBQ and he had them do work twice on his building and also on his residence and he spoke highly of them, so I'd like to give them a shot.
Good.
Unless there's any objections. Under apparatus and equipment maintenance, we did have our annual pump testing the other day. I was onsite for that. We had a few minor things that we had to fix, a few valves that were sticking and things like that, but all the trucks passed. It's important to have those annual pump testing in case we'd ever have some kind of thing happen. We could actually go back to our records and say the truck was tested and approved, so we did the best we could to make everything as safe as we could. I should have the final report on that within the month. Missouri Conservation Grant, we've got all the equipment in and we got our reimbursements from what I understand. The grant number one for community development for the Knox Box key locks. Our Knox Box program is slowly progressing and building. Uh, do you have those key locks on order? They should be here within the next 10 to 12 days and we'll get them installed in the truck. It'll be a more secure option for us.
Now, before you go on...
Yeah.
I think we're gonna recommend a change to the building code for Knox Boxes. It won't be retroactive. It would be for new construction or any major renovation. And then, so that, that will be before you in a couple, a couple of meetings from now.
Okay, any questions about the Knox Box program?
No.
Uh, in the last couple of weeks, as I put in the end of it, uh, when we talked to Riverview Man and we did our walkthrough, they were very open to the idea and we've talked to a couple of their agencies around and we have them going in slowly throughout. So I look forward to using it. It's a real good program and it hopefully saves some people some damage to buildings somewhere down the road. Uh, grant number two, as I put in my report, we did finally get the check for the Polaris and I'm in the process now of checking with some of the local, as close as we can get, vendors, Farmington and Festus, see if they'll match the state bid. If not, we'll, we'll go with the state bid, which is obviously cheapest around the state. So I should hopefully have that information within the next couple of weeks. Is there any other questions? I do wanna thank personally, since I'm here this month, you guys for allowing us to do the engine in the van. It's made a major improvement and it's helped us out a lot to give that truck a whole lot more years of life.
You know Kenny, when I, you're here.
I, I try to make what I can.
You're here. I appreciate that buddy.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks Kenny.
Thank you. So good night.
You too.
Steve?
Good evening everyone.
Good evening Steve.
Water and wastewater plant both been performing very well. Dry weather, uh, demands pretty well been staying the same since last month. Wastewater plant's doing good in the heat. We did have some issues with the lift station replacement, uh, with the electrical panel replacement on the Robinwood Lift Station. The panel that was put in is apparently more sensitive than the old panel and the old panel would not operate. Uh, the new panel won't operate the old pumps. So we had to replace a, replace one of the pumps. So we had to haul out of that lift station with the truck, um, for about five days. So, but as of Tuesday, station is...
Steve, at least it wouldn't operate. It's the, the old pumps were pulling too many amps.
Yes, they were pulling too many amps, uh, tripping out the overloads in the thermals. So we hauled out of that station for five or six days. As of Tuesday, uh, it was up and running in full automation.
Does water consumption start to climb with dry weather?
It, it, this week it's came up a little bit. We had to extend, uh, two hours on two days, uh, but other than that, uh, it's pretty well stayed the same.
It's gonna do up. Yep. It's gonna do up. Anything else for Steve? Is that the first time the gutters were cleaned on that facility that you're aware of?
That I'm aware of, yes.
I would think that would have been for major parts of the claw.
And the, uh, the gutters were actually clean on, at the water plant, all except for right over the downstream.
Oh really? So it wasn't a big issue?
No, just a little maul and up, up there.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks.
Walter, you're next on the list.
Hello.
Sorry, I called your thunder.
That's okay, that's alright. So the Heritage Commission, we had a meeting this week. Uh, there was, uh, one application from the May meeting that was held over. Five new applications that came in and then seven administrative approvals. And then you can see the building permits and all the permits that we've had in the last month. The meetings, Planning and Zoning Board of Aldermen and Heritage Commission meeting in the last month. As far as the training, I'm still trying to locate the, um, American Planning Association for zoning law. But I did contact, and on here, there was no date scheduled on the MoDOT for the LPA training. So I contacted Elquinn with MoDOT and she informed me that they probably won't have any coming up. So I'm gonna take the online course. So it takes about four hours to get through the online course and, um, but I can take it in sections. And so then I'll be able to move forward on that sooner than later. The, um...
In order to receive grants for like the trail, somebody has to be certified on the publication sheet. And I'm certified, but it's best for us to have two people, so that's why she's doing that.
Um, like Kenny said in his report and Martin had stated, we have ordered a Knox Box for City Hall. It's gonna be a shared box for us and the police department and so we will have one. It'll be installed once it's, once it arrives. And then Bob and I are working with Ken about changing the ordinance for installing Knox Boxes at commercial and industrial locations upon new construction or made, or renovations. And then we were also talking to, a little bit ago, about businesses that change hands. Um, maybe a company or an industry slip, you know, shuts down and then the new owner comes in. We may try to do that on an occupancy change as well for a new business coming in, just for the commercial industrial. I have a computer set up on that counter in there so that if people wanna come in and they wanna see information on their property that we have in the GIS system, we have it all set up now. So that's all up and going so they don't have to come around and like hover over my desk and try to see everything and, you know, we've got a specified, uh, computer for that now. And, um, then I have an ongoing issue with the new... And, um, then, I have an ongoing issue with the nuisance at forty-two South Main Street. I've been trying to reach the owner of this property since I began in this position in March. She has not contacted me at all. I've made attempts to leave her voicemails, emails, I tried to send her a Facebook message, um, letters, regular and certified mail. The police department has tried to assist us in locating her, we've not been able to. In fact, just today, my letter that I sent certified came back, and it was undeliverable. So she didn't claim that. This property, I know there's records and files that go back into two thousand and seven, nine, that, just the problem with the property. So I am just requesting that, um, that the board allow me to move forward with the necessary abatement procedure per the code, so that we can get this cleaned up, because the complaints that are coming from some of the neighbors directly next door are, um, valid. You know, he's, he's getting snakes and mosquitoes really bad. I went over there a couple of days ago, there's actually a tree limb down now that happened about probably three to four days now, and it fell from a tree, and it's covering, it's a large enough limb that it's still attached to the tree at the top, it's touching the neighbor's fence. It's all the way on the ground, it's a large enough limb that you can't even see through to the backyard to see the vehicle that's back there.
This person does not live in the residence?
She has a, she does not live in the residence.
Or, the neighbor informed us, he thinks she's visited the property since last December.
Correct.
She hasn't been there since?
That's, he doesn't, he has not recalled seeing her since then.
So this is by the Presbyterian Church, down the way?
This is, um, two doors up from Yvonne Lemire, or two doors south.
South.
This way.
South.
Uh, right across from the firehouse, the...
Was it the old storefront?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, yeah, I know who you're talking about.
So, you know, and, so the, basically the steps at this point would be investigating the nuisance, I have photographs, and, you know, Ms., and Bob Bunnell has been inside the building, because up until February, she was in contact with Petri. And she was just giving one excuse after another as to why the property couldn't get taken care of. So, she had given a final letter in February, giving her, I think, five days to take care of everything, or it was gonna be boarded up. Well, it didn't happen, we would, I'd like for it to not be boarded up necessarily, but maybe locked out to where something has to be done to it, she can't access the property until she's ready, you know, until we can get it taken care of. But on, at a minimum, the outside of the property is in really bad shape.
Yeah, it is.
And, um, I have photographs, if anybody wants to see them, and I just basically, I just want permission to be able to move forward with the abatement procedure, so that...
Move forward, please.
Yeah, she, she is the owner?
Yeah.
There were like...
There was several before. Yeah.
Involved with that.
Yeah.
So they all just said...
No, I think there was a court decision.
There was a court decision or something on that one.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay, move forward, Laura.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's all that I have, so unless anyone has any questions for me? Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you want to tell me what we need to do on these?
Okay, for the process, we need to have a hearing, and that requires publication of notice. Frank's advising that we have noticed two weeks in a row, uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna Monday, put, put a notice in, and then put one in for, for next Wednesday, and then one for the following Wednesday. And the question is, do you wanna wait for a regular meeting, or do you wanna dispose of this at a special meeting? And so we have to kinda set the date for that now.
I'm sorry, I don't wanna talk about that.
You're gonna have a, you guys are gonna be the hearing off, or the hearing, you're gonna make findings affect regarding to...
Frank, we did on the burnt house.
Yeah, I didn't.
Can't we just do the regular meeting?
Yeah, it's up to you.
You know, John, Don, you worked today.
No, I did not.
If, uh, if you want to do it, the, we, we won't...
We could do it at the minimum of the Monday, the, was it Monday?
Yeah, but June is, the, um...
The earliest we could do it.
It should take about an hour, at most.
Would be Monday, but...
It would, it would be June.
Well, she's gotta put on the evidence, we gotta make a record.
It's a, it's a process.
But your next meeting is the ninth, so, I mean, it'd just be three days later.
Yeah, so you do it would be the sixth, so...
Okay, let's do it at the ninth, the regular meeting.
Carlos? Or you say, Carlos saying the fourteen?
Okay, I'm sorry, what, what happened to my calendar?
Oh, yeah, that would only be the first Thursday.
You were looking at June's.
I was looking at June. Alright.
So when could we?
Twenty-ninth and the sixth. We're gonna publish on twenty-ninth, publish on the sixth, meet on the fourteenth.
Okay, the earliest we could do it would be the eleventh anyway, so it would only be three days later. Okay. Sandra?
Good evening. You have a sheet in front of you that shows the statistics on the, um, guests through the Welcome Center, and, um, I just have a couple of notes, and, you know, sometimes when you're in the middle of, in the middle of it, you don't realize it, you just know that you're busy. But looking back at, um, April and May, we had over one thousand visitors who were just here for groups, which was high, um, you can see the, um, figures there. April was up about three hundred, and May was up about five hundred. So for the year, we're at about nine percent up over, um, the calendar year-to-date last year, which is fairly consistent. We've had some months that were stronger than others, um, uh, it seems to have leveled out now, though. Right in the center of the report there, new grants for FY seventeen, we were notified in the month of June, um, that our, uh, grant applications through the State Division of Tourism were both fully funded. This is for the State Co-op Grant that we get every year for advertising, and also for the Marketing Platform Development Grant, we were funded, um, fully funded in both of those requests. And in the task forces, um, you heard from Bob Mueller a couple of, uh, weeks ago, and you have a resolution in front of you tonight about, um, taking the first step to realize that project that, um, Bob had laid out a couple of weeks ago with regard to the whole Wildlife Refuge Program. And so, um, the gentleman that was here speaking earlier from Fish and Wildlife Service, um, is just the first step to implement that. And, uh, another one of the task forces is the Print Task Force, um, so you have in front of you, you have the Upcoming Events Card. This is the one that we do two times a year now, and has everything listed on it from, uh, July through the end of the year and December. So, we try to get these out there so that everyone, if they come here to visit, or even if you have family coming in, you can make plans and, um, hopefully take advantage of one of our special events or festivals. Um, and then down at the bottom, I just wanted to, um, point out too that, um, we are also updating the, um, St. Genevieve Visitors Guide that has the map in it. We kinda put that on hold for a little while while we did a single-page rack card much like this, but it would have graphics on the front and back for St. Genevieve. We decided, or the Tourism Tax Commission decided to go forward with that project, so that we could put those rack cards in a contract for distribution all the way up and down the Interstate fifty-five corridor, all of the hotels from St. Louis to Sykesville that are in this rack card, um, program. And also in about thirty locations in St. Louis, major corporations, a couple of hospitals, and even, um, Scott Air Force Base over in Belleville as part of that rack distribution. So we developed a rack card, that's at the printers now, it'll be coming back shortly, and the next step will be, um, revisions on the Visitors Guide, and we're also finalizing a new website that, um, is a mobile responsive website, so it'll be fully adjustable for viewing on cell phones, tablets, or PCs. So, that's all I have, unless there are any questions. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll be minutes from June and I.
Is this what the committee report should be?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed those.
It's not on there, though, it wasn't on last...
I left it off again.
Anyway, uh, Don informed me before the meeting that the camera has been installed, and he's very happy with the operation of it, uh, that, uh, it's doing very well, and he hopes this one goes out, so we can get one like that here. But anyway, that's, that's all I had, but, isn't that worth a little?
I'll put it back on there, I'm sorry.
Alright, that's fine, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, now minutes of, uh, June and I. Will approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, and the closed session.
Thank you.
Okay?
Will approve.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Financial report for May.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. And, uh, Resolution two thousand sixteen twenty-four, a resolution which respect to the annexation of a certain unincorporated area.
This is, uh, the property south of town on the highway where they were doing the waterline extension, and there were three property owners, Oakenhoos and...
Yeah, that's right next to Oakenhoos.
This is the last one, it's the Arnold property.
Move through.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Thank you. Resolution two thousand sixteen twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the City of St. Genevieve to apply for a grant to implement a planning program in the Levy area. This was, what we just talked about. I'll take that first. All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Thank you. We will, how much will we lose? A little bit, right?
Thirty acres.
Thirty acres, but not all of its farm.
But not all of its farm.
So we will lose a little bit at rent income.
They haven't decided on the exact configuration, so I, you know, they're still working on what it's gonna, what shape it's gonna be.
Okay.
Who's been renting that?
Kurtz. And when we renewed the lease last year, I put in a provision that the city was considering this, and would, uh, kind of reserve the right to remove that portion of the land for the lease. And as it turns out, it's gonna be timed so that it will be between planting, harvest, and the next planting season, so, we don't have any crop payment issues.
Okay, Old Business Bill Number forty-one oh seven, second reading.
An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests for certain officials.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Huck.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi. Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika.
Yes.
Seven, yes, Daryl knows, one absent, Bill Number forty-one oh seven now becomes Ordinance forty forty-three.
Thank you, Bill Number forty-one oh eight, second reading.
An ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter four oh five, zoning regulations, Article five, supplement, supplementary and special uses and regulations, Section four oh five, point two hundred, special use regulations, second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ruzika.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Huck.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Seven, yes, Daryl knows, one absent, Bill Number forty-one oh eight now becomes Ordinance forty forty-four.
Okay, before we read the next bill, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Get up there, please. Just take thirty seconds.
Yes, sir.
Why are we doing this? Ordinance authorizing no parking restriction on South Side Emergency Street between Second and Third.
This was disgusting.
This...
Yeah, I was gonna say I did it.
That's the one parking, all two parking spots, right?
Yeah, I did.
Did I miss that?
My understanding is there was some trouble coming out of the, out of the post office for the bigger trucks.
Okay. I'm sorry, I missed that the last time, I apologize. I got a free pass, I wasn't here.
Okay. Bill Number... Wait, wait, we read it already, didn't we?
No.
No.
Okay, Bill Number forty-one oh nine, second reading.
An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing a no parking restriction on the South Side of Merchant Street between Second Street and Main Street.
Move through.
Second. Roll call.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Huck.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Seven, yes, Daryl knows, one absent, Bill Number forty-one oh nine now becomes Ordinance forty forty-five.
Thank you, um, no new business, anyone public comments, anybody? Karen?
Good evening. I just wanted to update you guys on downtown rental stuff, because it's been a little while since I've been here. Um, we have an art walk on Friday, we're having the ice cream social, and are giving out free ice creams, look for us, people that get there, so, be there, be square, get your free ice cream. Um, down at Sarah's is where the after-party is. And, um, in July, we have Moonlight Madness set for July thirteenth? Couldn't write the date down. Yes, it's the thirteenth, we moved it to a Wednesday this year, um, so we are working on promoting that, it's usually a really good event, and traditionally, it's been a locals' event that people come out for, and in the last, I would say, last two years, um, probably partly because we have promoted it so early, it's become a tourism event as well. I had ladies came in last year, um, an hour and a half away that came in just for the shopping event, so, um, it ends up being a really good event, so it's from six to nine on, um, June thirteenth. Um, one of the probably most exciting initiatives, in my opinion, that we're working on right now, um, in August, our art walk is the night of the St. Jen Valley football game, and so we were trying to figure out what we could do to promote both schools and, um, still have some people come down for art walk and enjoy downtown. So what we're working on with St. Jen and Valley is a window paint contest, um, displaying their hometown pride, so the idea is that we have one group from St. Jen, and one group from Valley, and they collaboratively paint a window, um, in the downtown district about what St. Jen means to them and hometown pride. Um, and so then, we were looking for, um, donations for prizes for the groups, um, one of the, one of the schools thought that they should, then, they can then donate that money to local charities if they want. You know, I said, you know, these groups, you know, you're always going on trips, you always need money, so it's, whatever the groups want to do, whether they want to keep with their prize money, or they want to donate it, um, we have a individual that is silently giving us two hundred dollars for prize money, and then we have a fifty dollars from Women's Club, and we're still working on some money, we need about four fifty is what we're hoping to get, since the prizes will be split between the two schools, so that it's, you know, it's a substantial amount for them. Um, but we're hoping that that will help get students and parents and everybody at least downtown to see what's going on. Um, it amazes me how many people I have in my shop just moving to that corner that had never been in my shop on Main Street, had no idea that I was even existed, and I was there two and a half years, so, um, I hear, I mean, I literally hear it every week, so. Um, we're also moving forward, um, with the Design Committee on the Wayfinding Signs, um, we were allowed that five thousand dollar budget from you all last year, and, um, hopefully, at the next meeting, um, our next board meeting, when we'll have approval on the design of that, and then it'll come for you guys to approval too, so we can, um, get that project rolling. And also, um, just to notify you guys, we are sending three board members to Washington, Missouri for the Missouri Main Street Training in July. Um, the board members have committed to at least a year of service afterwards, though their positions are at least two years on the board afterwards, um, so we're really looking forward to help that hone our vision and keep building downtown, so. Thanks.
Thank you. Somebody else? Okay, well, other business, we have, um, Jen Robbins, represented by Missy Fowler, the Realtor, is appealing... We have Jen Robbins, represented by Missy Fowler, the realtor, is appealing the decision by the St. Genevieve Heritage Commission for pla, or for place, replacement of vinyl windows on the property located at 647 La Porte Street. Miss Carla, is here from you first?
Okay. Evidence in Section 410.400 of the St. Genevieve Municipal Code, the letter of appeal received from Missy Fowler. The my staff report and then the record of vote from the Heritage Commission, which was to deny the application with a vote of three in favor to deny one opposed and one
Just to clarify your stamp recommendation, request approval of it, though, right?
That is correct because I did speak to Missy whenever she had come in to fill out the application about repairing the windows, if it's possible to repair them. She had stated that they had talked to a contractor about repairing them. He was concerned that he would break the glass when he was reglazing and the cords are broke on several of the windows, so when they're unlocked, the top sash drops. So because of that and after discussing that with her and they were still moving forward wanting to do vinyl windows, then my recommendation was a one-over-one, which would match the design of the window.
Now, this, this house in question, from what I gather here, it has been re-sided in the past, so we're not talking about a house that, I mean, you've got iron railings, you've got aluminum siding, metal siding of some sort, so it's not an original unmodified house. In other words, it gets all the years itself since they've done it.
Yeah. Martin, did you have something?
I was wondering if you could explain the logic of the Heritage Commission reaching their decision.
The, the reason that the, the Heritage Commission felt that the windows could still be replaced, or I'm sorry, repaired, that even though taking them apart, that they could, and that actually would cost less to have them repaired than it would be to replace them. And that was the reason for the decision.
And if I'm understanding correctly, windows that they're proposing to put in would be the same opening size and you're not changing the...
That is correct. Not changing the structure of the building, same opening size, one-over-one, wood windows there, one-over-one vinyl windows proposed.
And the new windows would be better for the winter?
That's, and that was the other concern about energy efficiency.
Sure. Right.
And she has small children and her concern was unlocking those windows and the top sash falling. So...
What, do we know a build date on that house?
1900.
1900, yeah.
I, oh. Mayor? They putting them in as replacement windows, just taking the sash out and putting these in as vinyl replacement windows, leaving the frames that are there in there? Probably?
I believe so.
Okay. Well, I mean, it, yes, we've had a little bit of discussion on this. It does leave the frame, it does leave the structure of the frame there. You still would end up with the weight pockets back there that you could replace, you could put, somebody wanted to put old windows back in there, they could put back, windows back in there by removing the vinyl replacement windows. It's not a complete tear out. On the other side of that, the idea of re-glazing the window with the idea that you're gonna break the glass, you take that chance every time you do a window, so that, that's, in the same way with the weights and the ropes, that's just common maintenance on those old windows. Weights, you need to replace the ropes every 50 years when the ropes rot, so those are normal maintenance issues with those windows and I, I don't, you know, that, those are not real, real hard things to do, especially for a contractor. But the, the other side of it is, you're replacing with the vinyl window that could end up being, you could get sash remade or if they end up keeping those old sash put back in there or somebody wanted to come back and do that, I guess that's a possibility to, to a decision. I don't know. Is that done?
It has limited storms on the outside.
Was there some discussion about the proximity of this building to the, with the structures on each side of it or...
Not on this.
Okay, I knew that was a different...
Not on this house. It was on another one at the meeting.
Well, I, I've made my opinions in the past well, you know, known about this sort of thing based on what you were discussing. You're not changing the proportions of the house, you're not altering that. And especially when we're talking about a house that already has iron railings on it and some other things have been done over the years. I don't know. I just, I just feel like you don't want to let them put the windows in, but whatever the rest of you feel.
I'm kinda like you. I, I, you know, if this was still pristine like it was...
Exactly. Original siding and all of that, I would...
Then I'd say, no. Since they changed everything else, I'd say, yeah, go ahead and put them in.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
Yeah.
Could I just add that if, maybe if you did go with that recommendation that you would ask that the old sash be put into storage, whether it be in an attic or basement or somewhere, that if a new owner came along and wanted to put the win, put the house back the way it was, those things would be available?
I think that's...
I don't think that's unreasonable.
Yeah, I don't think this is, not much to add, yeah. Do that. So what kind of motion we gonna make here?
Need a motion on this or what do we?
I'll make a motion to approve your windows with the condition, what condition this in...
I'll second it. Second.
All right, you will just a force vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carla.
Okay, we, St. Genevieve Legion requesting a temporary liquor license for their juror fed August 13th and 14th.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? St. Genevieve Lions Club requesting a temporary liquor license for their juror fed August 13th, 14th.
Motion temporary?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the St. Genevieve Knights of Columbus requesting a temporary liquor license for their juror fed August 13th and 14th.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we have the approval of the 2016-17 annual liquor license renewals. There's a couple on there. The Sand Bar per se, you just approved a new one, this would be the old one, so the, that one actually comes off because that's the old one. And the, what's the other one? Pam, is it on here?
Um, yes, Merchant Street Tobacco is out of business.
That's all.
Wow. So... If you wanna, if you want to prove these all as a group or you...
Make a motion to approve them all.
Second.
You know, one thing you might wanna consider doing is asking either the city administrator or the chief of police whether or not any one of these establishments has received significant complaints so that maybe you would remove them and study it a little bit longer. We've denied liquor licenses on renewals. But if they're not prepared, prepared to do that, then you, you might wanna do it next year.
I did ask, I did ask Eric Pryor to put him on here if he had any issues with them and we discussed that.
Yes, we did.
There you go.
That's good.
Okay. So you're, you got that all worked out, I take it, so?
Sure.
And we got a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Now, before we do this topic, Alderman Prince brought up this possibility, and that is for the community organizations that only do liquor license during juror vet. He wondered about the possibility of you making that, giving the authority for me or Pam more likely, do an administrative issue of a temporary liquor license rather than having to vote on it every year. But you would limit it to those groups, you know, and...
How much vote was it to vote on?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. It's the simplest thing in the world. We vote on it, it's over.
Okay.
No one was there with their license.
Okay. Okay, anything else? We do need a...
Close session.
Close session.
Litigation. Or pending, possibly.
Move to go into closed session.
Second.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Huff.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika.
Yes.
Motion carries at 6:30.